Change order at 7:02. Could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Thanks very much, we'll get started. I need a motion to approve the minutes of March 19, 2015.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Twenty seconds. Questions, changes, additions, substitutions, deletions? Jen?
Is there any way that we could have a summary put in or even perhaps an attachment to the public comment for Scott? I think it's important, perhaps even just a summary, because throughout the meeting minutes, there are small summaries of things that were said. I'd just like to see what's there expanded.
That actual statement is part of our record at the S.A.U. office, so it's the record that's attached to this.
Okay.
Because he gave it to us in writing.
Okay. Under the superintendent's report on page three, I didn't-
Before we do that, can we just, should there be a statement on here, something like, it's part of the record, so that people would know? Just a process procedural statement.
Whatever the board would like, doesn't matter. I mean, it's in the record.
What would be put in there if you wanted to see the public comment? Separate statement available upon request or something?
Sure, yeah, that would be okay.
How does it get attached to the minutes? It's just, is it attached?
Yeah, it's just literally, we copy, if somebody asks for the minutes, we would just copy that with this and it would just all go.
I, it's, I, do we, and, I mean, this is a question. Do we have a policy around that? Or a protocol?
I'd have to look, but in the past, because it's presented to the board as a document, they gave it to the board.
Common practice for the last, probably at least eight, nine years.
Okay.
Okay. Under the superintendent's report on page three, I don't know what a YRB is.
Uterus Behavior Survey.
Perhaps that could be spelled out.
It's a common acronym.
Page four, section D, the health insurance option, LGC-GMA. I mean, I know that's Local Government Center.
Guaranteed Maximum.
Actually, GMR.
GMR.
Yeah.
Good morning, America.
And on page five, within the bolded text, I'm wondering if that actually, the second paragraph that is bolded, if that actually belongs there?
Right, the order is off.
Well, I'm referencing-
It should come after.
Because it came out of non-public.
It came out, we left, made a motion to leave it non-public, and then it comes after that.
Yeah, and then we affirmed.
Okay.
Yep, that would, because you went into non-public, came out of non-public, made the motion, then sealed the minutes. Or did you seal the minutes before you made the motion?
We sealed the minutes first, I believe.
First and then made, so it should go after that?
Which kind of prompts a question. Since I've never, on the Budget Committee, been minutes in a seal, how does this Board review the minutes that are sealed to see if those minutes are indeed the minutes we agreed to?
You don't, the Secretary seals them and puts them in our seat.
So it's the Secretary of Minutes? Not necessarily, it may or may not be reflecting of approval. Is that, could we look at that, Philip, to see if that's the, because 91A, but I've never really researched it.
Those were my thoughts and comments from the minutes.
I think that ultimately, the way that this Board has dealt with that is, to the extent that there are motions made, those motions are then captured by affirmation outside of the non-public.
Right.
If there are not any motions made, then the discussion, if it was non-public, becomes almost superfluous, because it didn't lead to any action. But, let's have a look at it and see what we can find out. That was more by way of explanation than position.
Sure.
Any other changes, additions, deletions?
I do have one question, though.
Please.
Because I did not actually vote because of the policy BBBG, it's not really reflected in the minutes. I'm not necessarily asking for it to be reflected in those minutes, but I'd like it reflected somewhere, that I was pointing to that policy and I deferred to the Policy Committee to take a peek at it, to see if that needs to be adjusted. I don't know if it needs to be part of this meeting's minutes, not necessarily a revisement of the other minutes. Your choice.
Ultimately, I don't know that it is my choice.
Well, no, I'm saying it's, you know, I'm looking towards you guys to find out. You have history. I just want it reflected someplace.
Okay. So, absent from these minutes is the foundation for not voting?
Correct.
So, the things that you would like reflected in these minutes are the things that occurred, which were your decision not to vote and your reliance on the policy.
Yes.
And your desire as a member of the Board to have that policy examined.
Yes.
Assuming everybody is consistent with Dan's memory and my memory, because that sounds like what happened to me.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah. Are there any other changes? Additions, deletions, corrections? Everybody who's listed as being here was here? Good. Seeing no further. All in favor of approving the minutes as corrected and amended?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Opposed? Abstentions? Where are your names? Correspondents?
There's a letter, a couple substitute reports and a letter from Hanaford Superm-, actually from us, to Hanaford Supermarkets, thanking us for, the Goffstown High School received a little over $1,400 from their, and Hanaford helps schools. So we sent them a thank you note for that.
Very good, I will pass that on. Commendations and good news?
First, maybe? Oh, sure. So, as I said last meeting, N.H.S. is putting on the penny slam and it started this week. So, during lunches, they've been collecting coins and just money in general for the fundraiser and students, N.H.S. students during their chat room, I try to like go to other studies to inform them of why they're giving money, that way people will have more incentive to give money if they know what it's going for. For student council, they have a region meeting this Wednesday that most of them, I think, are going to. It's a big meeting for all the student councils in the area and I've heard it's very fun and they learn a lot, so that's exciting for them. And for me, N.W.E.A.s, the sophomores did really well last week. I don't know any statistics, but I heard that they did really well. The commercial art classes were involved in a competition for Patriotic America and Melissa Roy from the period three class won that and she'll be going on to higher levels. So she won $50 for winning the class and then she'll continue on. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
At Mount Ewe, you had two outside speakers in the last couple of weeks. One of them was, I can't pronounce his last name, it's African, Nyambe or, his name was Peter, he's from Sudan, and he came to talk to the seventh grade about the Lost Boys of Sudan, because he is one himself, and so he spoke to all, all three teams about his experiences in Sudan and what it was like in that part of history. Also, Si Montgomery, who's an author of several books and articles on animal species, came on the 22nd to speak to the seventh grade about being an author and how to become an author. That was successful, too. A lot is going on in the music department. On Friday, March 23rd, the chorus sang at the Bow High School and they did a great job, I'm hearing. On the 29th, they went to Litchfield and the, actually, Litchfield came to our school that night and they had a concert for both Goffstown and Litchfield and it ran over very well. Everyone did a great job. Yesterday was the Strings Fest. About 245 people attended, 55 Goffstown students were involved. They sold T-shirts and snacks, so they made about $400 in that, and plus they get money for registration, so they've got some money from it. Ms. Orkut wanted me to please thank many Goffstown parents and students. At least 12 students from the high school came to help out. She also wanted me to thank Derek Landano, Christina Calapulitessar, I can never say that great name, she's our, she's one of our music teachers, Joyce Pog and Ken Martin. And she wanted, she wanted to just let you know that she's thinking about starting a fiddle club next year. She's thinking that maybe in the afternoons, one night after school, she might have a fiddle club. She thinks that the kids might like that. And they would also involve banjos and guitars and have a fun folk kind of thing.
Would you do me a favor or get an answer to this question? Is a fiddle another name for a violin?
Yes, it is.
Completely different instruments?
It's the same instrument, just used in a different way.
Okay.
Today, they went to the Bel Air Nursing Home and when they came back, I had one of my kids in my class and he said that they had a great time and the people over there really liked it, so. Congratulations to Henry Aslan, he participated in the state level and the National Geographic Day on Friday, the 30th, last Friday. 150 students from New Hampshire participated and Henry missed being in the top 10, the final round, by one question. Did an outstanding job. I want you to know that, starting today, April 2nd through April 20th, our M.V.M.S. Student Council is holding a book drive. New and gently-used books will be collected for two schools, both K-8 school, one is a bilingual school and the other is Jenks Elementary School in Chestnut Hill, Pennsylvania. So, we're asking kids and parents and anyone who would like to donate new and gently-used books to us, so we can send them to Pennsylvania. Sixth grade work exploration day is next Friday, the 13th. So the kids are looking forward and have been signing up to go to work with their parents and to find out a little bit more about jobs and what it's like to work. This year's eighth grade academic honors night will be held on Thursday, April 19th. Invitations have been sent out and the kids are getting really excited about coming to the dinner where the, where the teachers serve them. And today, N.W.E.A. testing started and it went very well. That's all I have for this week.
How long does the N.W.E.A. testing-
It'll be about two weeks for our school.
Dan?
You mentioned something about the books and things, the Pennsylvania trip?
No, it's not a trip to Pennsylvania, that's where the books will be sent to.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
I'll start with Glen Lake. Leslie wanted me to mention that Glen Lake hosted a team from Seabrook who is interested in duplicating the Integrated Preschool Program and using OWL, which stands for Opening the World of Learning, that's the core preschool curriculum, which Glen Lake implemented with much success this year. From David at Bartlett, on Friday, March 30th, the student and staff celebrated their own Earth Hour. Everyone was encouraged to wear black and the lights were shut off at 2:00. While the lights were out, everyone decorated canvas shopping bags. This is an annual event at Bartlett, which is a kickoff for Earth Day events. Earth Hour was celebrated around the world on Saturday, March 31st, from 8:30 to 9:30 p.m. The Greater Goffstown Community Association will be holding its Easter Bunny Breakfast this Saturday, April 7th, at Bartlett Elementary School. A cake decorating contest will be held at Bartlett on Friday, April 6th. Cakes will be used in the cake walk during the Easter Bunny Breakfast. Beginning this month through mid-May, Bartlett students in grades two through four will be taking the NIWA assessment and reading math and language usage. On April 11th and April 18th, Bartlett will be having its grandparents lunch. We will be serving, they will be serving macaroni and cheese with ham. This is what the students selected to be served during their kids' vote program in And, last but not least for Bartlett, on Saturday, April 14th, the Bartlett PTA will be holding its annual father-daughter contest. And now for Maple Avenue, the PFT Father-Daughter Ball took place in late March with approximately 250 participants. The luau theme was a big hit, along with a large disco ball. Congratulations to the Maple DI team, crazy creators, who placed fourth at the state competition on Saturday. This year, Maple Avenue had six DI teams. A nationally-recognized basket weaving event last week at Maple Avenue. All students worked with Alice Ogden to create an ornament called a tree star. She also provided two assemblies to give students a chance to see traditional basket making and materials. I took pictures, I can bring them to the next bookroom, maybe if you're interested. It's pretty cool, actually. I'll never look at a basket the same way again. And then, let's see, we have, the two elementary schools are joining together for a Spring Strings Concert, Maple and Bartlett Strings Program. Will be putting on their concert at Goffstown High School on Tuesday, April 17th, at 7:00 p.m. And then, last but not least, I wanted to mention, a couple of weeks ago, I went to Massachusetts, excuse me, to Lowell and I went to go see one of our second grade teachers at Maple Avenue donate 14 inches of her hair to Lux of Love, and she attended with a student from her classroom who also donated her hair. She had to donate at least 10 inches. It was really, really, it was just a neat event. It was just really cool. They were onstage, so in front of this huge crowd, they got their hair chopped off for such a good cause, but they both cried and then hugged each other, which was just really sweet. And the second grade student just, she stood up and she actually got to speak a little bit, and she just kept referring back to her second grade teacher and how, I just have two pictures that I just wanted to show you guys, how they did this and that they had been talking about it for a while. So it was just really neat. It was, it was really, really cool, yeah, and it was just for a great cause, but I remember her saying that, that they were nervous about cutting all that hair off, but it was just really, it was sweet.
Takes a long time to grow that hair.
Yeah. So 14 inches for the teacher and I think 10 inches for, for the student. Yeah, it was really neat.
Anybody around the table ever done anything?
I have.
Not me. I was referring to Lori.
I was in your high school.
Oh, that's me.
Yeah. Lori, good.
Did you forget?
It was definitely, yeah, it definitely, it's kind of emotional when you have long hair and they-
I bet it is.
Yeah, it was about 14 inches, yeah.
Yeah, it was really cool. It was neat, and that's all I have.
I see Dan gave it all.
I might give him a basis then.
Sounds like it's so long already.
Do it about once every 28 months.
All right. Yep. All right. Jenny's got one.
Yeah, well, we're out of here. Commendations, excuse me, we've done commendations, good news, public comment?
Jenny's got a commendation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize for the leak of the year.
I read in the paper also that Maple Avenue had a regional winner of a poster contest for Smokey and the Bear and fire prevention, Jennifer Kulik, I believe is her name. And I have to say that my list here from the paper, people have mentioned, and it's really cool that there's this many things about our students in the paper, which is something that hasn't been happening a lot.
We've been working on that.
Yeah, I was pleased to see that many things in just one week's paper.
Any other commendations or good news? Public comment? Seeing none, I am going to then deviate a little bit from our agenda, because we have with us this evening an Eagle Scout from high school, right?
Yep.
Cormac, would you do me a favor? Would you help me so I don't butcher your last name?
Cantargis.
Cantargis, thank you very much. I'd have done just fine.
And Cormac's going to talk a little bit, he's interested in doing an Eagle Scout project here at high school, so he's going to share with you what he'd like to do and is looking for Board approval to do that. And he has our support, administration's support to do this.
I have 12 packets, I'll hand them out.
Can I give you a hand?
If you could, I'll just, I'll pass them down so you can-
If you'll do that side, I'll do this side.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. So, I'm Cormac. I attend here at this school and I'm from troop 135 and I'm looking to become an Eagle Scout. If you look through the packet, you'll see all these pictures of the campus of the school near the sign. When you came in, you would have noticed that the area is kind of barren or just uninteresting. Looking to change that. To do that, I'm going to be planting a series of plants and other than that, I'm planning on putting a picnic table in there, a classic wooden picnic table, which I'll assemble myself. Yeah, and two flower beds near the sign to make that area look more interesting as well. Is there any questions at all, anything that could probably help me out?
I have a question. Do you have experience planting? Do you have knowledge of plants?
No, but I will be able to find other people that do and they'll be able to help me with that. This isn't something that I would do alone. I would get the help from my troop and my family and other people, possibly call some landscapers or something like that, and they would be able to help me with that.
I would suggest you can call several landscapers in Goffstown that have continuously donated to the school. I'm sure they would help you out with offering you suggestions on that. Now, what are you doing? I noticed you mentioned you're going to do a car wash for fundraising. Is a car wash going to raise you $700?
Normally, we have several fundraiser days and that particular location has been used several times by our group and normally brings around $200 per day. Other than that, I was informed by my principal that I might be able to get some kind of donation from the school board or the high school particularly.
Well, we're going to have to ask Frank Rees coming up with that money, huh? Hope he's reaching right into his own back bucket, right?
So, Judy?
I just wanted to say that I think this is a really good idea, because obviously, we don't have money for landscaping in our budget and these are some really sad-looking parts of, you know, friends of our school that we've chosen. I just want to thank you for taking on a project as big as this and donating to us, so thank you. Good luck on it.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions about the project?
You might want to rethink the hostas, because the deer love them.
Oh, yeah, and we do, we have seen deer come in the park and that, so yeah, that's a good point.
Since this is a project proposal, I have time to rethink what I'm doing for my final plan.
We need to find some people who are thrilled.
I mean, it's more, that will stay for each season.
Cormac, I was about to fill in my question, were you thinking of putting perennial plants in, like in the flower bed, that would come back here for you?
Is that the type of plant that stays?
Yeah.
Yeah. My principal said that I should probably do that. I just didn't have time to put it in the proposal.
Yeah, and Cormac, you can talk to Mr. McBride and he can help you hook up with one of the landscapers that we use and they can probably help you come up with a plan and kind of the cost for what those, they can probably give you a deal on some plants too. So if you talk to Mr. McBride, tell him we said, to see if he can hook you up with a landscaper.
All right.
We should make a motion, yeah, he'll probably want a motion.
My mom knows some people from there. Other than that, I was thinking for future maintenance for the, for the area that I would be building here, I could maybe get some help from the environmental science club in the school or the, in addition to that, or rather than that, the garden club for the town.
Mr. Claude here.
And that would be for maintaining it once it's planted and going forward?
Once it's done for maintaining it, yeah.
Year after year. I noticed there is a fire hydrant right in the, the front of your, your plant. Did you notice that?
Yes.
What's your plans for, because if it's ever needed, firefighters don't necessarily tiptoe to get to the hydrant.
Well, replant it.
Well, if you look in the pictures, I kind of, I think around that, but I will probably go and ask them if it's okay.
Okay. See if they have anything. I'm sure even with the, as long as there's nothing, anything large, the thing is, if we put anything pretty and they have to get there, that's not their primary concern of saving the plant.
You probably want to ask them how far away would be safe to build, that way you can kind of set it up that way. Obviously not in front of it, because that's where they'll directly go.
Then that works fine, because basically right now, everything is just in a rough estimate of where it's going to be, other than that thing that looks like half a berm that I'll be planting.
I guess I would ask this Board two questions, then. Would you prefer to see a finalized plan before you approve, or are you, do you have enough confidence in the proposal, as you've seen it today, to make a motion to approve the plan in its current form?
I'd make a motion to approve it tonight, so that he can get started. And I'm sure whatever he comes up with certainly will be much more beautiful than his there now, I'm concerned whatsoever, so.
Can't get worse.
I would make that.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
With your permission, Virginia, I'd like to add a little statement that says, final plan's approved by, let's say, you know, Principal McBride or the administration, because we haven't seen the plans, we haven't seen the hostas, and we want to make sure that whatever goes there legally, he just doesn't pull whatever he wants, but something that they would approve of. That's the only thing I don't think of.
This is going to be done under the supervision of the Eagle Scouts?
Yes, this would be done under the supervision of most of the leadership in my troop and my school master, and there's an Eagle Board that I have to go to after I get the beneficiary approval, and they have to agree, just like we are now, about everything that is in my proposal.
So, so what you're saying is there's a-
that whatever goes there legally, he just doesn't pull whatever he wants, but something that they would approve of. That's the only thing I don't think.
This is going to be done under the supervision of the Eagle Scouts?
Yes. This would be done under the supervision of most of the leadership in my troop, my school master. And there's an Eagle Board that I have to go to after I get the beneficiary approval. And they have to agree, just like we are now, about everything that is in my proposal.
So what you're saying is there's a process in place by which somebody here needs to approve the plan that you eventually will present to your board?
Yes.
Who then has to approve it?
And.
It's a lengthy process.
All the while, I'll be having a project coach, someone representative for my troop, guiding me, maybe adult.
Dan, knowing that, is the motion adequate as it stands? Or would you still?
I would like to infer what you mentioned, that there is a process, and as long as that process is followed, this board gives permission to go forward?
That's fine.
You're okay with that? Partification?
I don't know that it's necessary, but.
I don't think it's the least bit necessary because I don't know what he could put there for plants that would be ugly or inappropriate. It's not like.
A little bit of poison ivy around the fire hydrant. Those guys who don't walk delicately.
I think it's adding too much to it, but whatever.
All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Abstentions? Reunions? Cormac, thanks very much.
Good news.
Good luck.
Did I ask you to sign this official copy?
You may ask me to do anything. As long as I can meet her first.
Ask her for an A in math class or something.
Beneficiary approval.
Thank you for thinking of us in your project. That's great.
What made you think of this for the project?
I was looking at it all the time.
I only had a couple of ideas at first, and this one seemed worse. But other than that, the school's good, and I'd like to see it better than it already is.
Especially because it's the front of the school and everyone.
It's always nicer, yeah.
Not like that, but it's a nice sanctuary at lunchtime, right?
Absolutely.
Well, standing committee reports. Admin and finance?
Everybody takes their email, I take it, so.
Too old for this, you know.
I'll go back. You sent an email with me. All the details are there, but I'll go over it anyway to those who haven't had a chance to read it. And I would like to move, if I can find it. Here we go. In all fairness, Ray sent it this morning. I'd like to move the manifest of $1,152,652.63.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
And the major items are payroll, $500,372.65. Payroll taxes, $156,695. March retirement system payments were $219,814. A grand total of $876,881. The special ed, the Crotchett Mountain, this is the last two weeks in February, basically, and the first two weeks in March. The student services, $30,509. And special ed transportation for the month of February, $5,526. The total of special ed's $36,035. Under general expenses, we have $6,113 to Fuller Oil, but only for the high school. For the Gosstown Truck Center, the March regular ed transportation, $93,812. For the athletic transportation, $7,397. Icon, this visiting machine lease, $7,607. And our old friend PSNH, $7,730, Mountain View only. UPS, USPS, which is our post office, $5,500 for posted charges, all the schools, all the meters are to recharge. So the grand total for general expenses, $128,159. Which brings us to a total of $1,417,75.78.
Any questions regarding the manifest?
Any questions? I do. The non-detailed subtotal is $111,577. It's 9.68% of the total manifest. Am I correct in presuming that we only list those that are 5,000 and below?
That's right. 5,000 and above.
That would make sense, 5,000 and above, at least 5,000. Is there a report that comes out that shows a list? Not all the invoices or anything that goes necessarily with it, all a lot of paperwork, but because the manifest is like an accounts payable list, that we have the opportunity of taking a peek at?
I suspect that there is.
There's not something.
There's a check register that's issued with each of these manifest packages, which details each and every individual payable presented to the, on the manifest.
But not to hand out to us. We just get the 5,000 and above.
And then a couple of times a year.
We go through the whole thing, right? I'm just curious, because I'm a numbers guy and I like to see the numbers. I didn't know if that was something that was easily available that I could take a peek at. That is a request. If it's not taking a lot of time.
Excuse me?
If it doesn't take a lot of time to produce. I mean, I'm not looking to create a lot of work, but it's just, I just love to review it. That's what I do.
Ray, is that the detail, like the packet?
Yes. Have it in hard copy, and that's how I would propose to submit it, not an electronic.
No, I would say we could bring it to A and F meeting, and if you're at A and F meeting, you can review it at A and F meeting.
I think that's a good compromise.
Because we already have it, so we can just bring the packet. You don't have, it wouldn't be one sheet. It's each, there's a summary sheet for each packet, each section.
How many packets are there normally?
Depends on, sometimes they're this, and sometimes they're this. Depends on the month and how big the manifest is.
The stuff underneath, though, is all the stuff that goes with the top sheet. And it's really only the top sheet that I'd be more interested.
Well, they're all together, so.
That's why they're. I see the detail that you're asking to see if you review top sheets only. Each packet could probably be, you know, anywhere from five to 10 pages.
Okay. I would love to take a peek at that, and if it looks like, you know, I'm good with it, I'm new, I'd love to take a peek. And if it becomes too much of a burden, then I'll relinquish my request. Appreciate it.
Would that be weekly or monthly? You want that every meeting or once a month?
I'd like to take a meet every time if possible. Just, I don't know what it looks like, I don't want to seize, but I'm very curious. What it's going to do for me is give me an idea of the daily routine, what happens every two weeks. I can gather a lot of stuff on how things work. So when questions come before the board, I'll be able to have a little background information of how things are run from that area, because that's my, that's my reason for wanting to take a peek, so I can get a better firm understanding, so I can be a better board member.
Is that going to be a burden, Ray?
That has to be generated anyway as part of the payables process, so we'll just bring the document in.
Is it generated, like, I'm getting, is it generated once a month or is it generated?
Generated the same.
For each manifest, Hank, yeah.
So I think we would be fine with bringing it to A and F and not as an agenda item, but if you want to review them, you can review them at A and F.
I appreciate that.
He's lugging over to me.
Any other A and F?
Did you look on the manifest?
No.
I don't think you did.
All in favor of approving the manifest as presented?
Oh, need Keith.
Keith?
Keith, the manifest?
Is that a yes?
Yes. I was standing, I didn't hear the whole thing.
No, no, the manifest, just approving the manifest.
Oh, yes, that's fine, yes.
Thank you, Suzanne. We're unanimous. Human Resources.
Nothing new. Next meeting next week will be at 5:00.
Oh, actually, FCS asked for it to be at 5:30, to try it at 5:30 instead of 5:00, I'm sorry. Because typically, if she has a meeting, it ends at 5:00, and so it gives her no time to have a break or dinner or anything to go from that to C and E. So she's asking if it can start at 5:30 and try that.
We can try at 5:30.
It's just a lot to go from meeting to meeting.
Really?
And knowing that HR and C and E always meet back-to-back, it makes it a little difficult. So if we could add half an hour to start with and see where that goes. Appreciate it.
Plan Communications.
We met tonight. The hot topic was the board retreat. As you all may recall, Stacy had sent out a meeting wizard to try to determine an appropriate Saturday where we could all convene and have our board retreat. And sadly, out of the three Saturdays we had, we don't have one. So we can move into June and try another Saturday in June, or we knocked around maybe having it at night. The drawback, of course, is we've all put in a full day of work, and when you do the board retreat, you want to make sure that you're fresh and you're relaxed and you have some time, you know, to devote to the process. So we are interested in what the board's pleasure is. Do we continue to pursue Saturdays? Or would the board enjoy that we maybe consider the third Monday or perhaps a third Wednesday of the month?
I will add to the equation that, to the extent that any date was more favorable than any of the others, so that if it makes sense, we might be able to, the 19th had the most available people who could make it. The other two dates, I think we got over 50%, but not much more.
Got five, yeah.
Five and.
Not good.
Four and five.
And seven on the.
19th.
19th.
And that could be six.
I don't, I don't know if the 19th is more or less, because I don't know who said yes and who said no. But if the 19th.
It was Hank and Ginny, and I think Ginny may have promised with Saturdays anyway.
Yeah.
And Hank's going to go check and see if it's a possibility.
Yeah, Hank was going to revisit.
No, that's fine.
So just while we're here, does the board in general wish for us to continue to pursue Saturdays? Or do we want to look at opening up a weeknight?
June and July Saturdays become difficult for me after the holidays. Early June would be better than midsummer.
Does anybody else want to chime in with, do we keep looking at weekends or nights?
I feel very selfish about my Saturdays. And for me, probably early June is going to be tougher with a graduating senior this year. I would prefer an evening, come, you know, have a dinner and get started right away over dinner, go till 10:00, and if we need to do it again, we could do it again. That would be my preference.
Plotluck?
Sure.
Is anybody else?
I'm okay with that, too.
One away.
Well, we did the evening ones, they ended up being less productive because people were coming out of work, they were tired.
I would say by 10:00, I'll tell you, I'm exhausted.
Yeah. All right, we'll shoot out, we'll look at some different dates then.
Do we, I mean, do we want, well, we could tentatively, I mean, Hank may be able to do, then if we're looking, continue on a Saturday, Hank and Ginny, and I think Ginny, for you, any Saturday is going to be on the table. So then do we try another day? Or do we try if Hank can do the 19th? If it's, do you want to? You can?
Okay.
Confirm.
Can you confirm Hank, please?
Yep.
Okay. As far as other matters on the retreat, we were just talking about the sorts of things that we wanted to breach while we were at the retreat, updating our mission and our goals. We want to take a look at the committees and the purpose. I think we touched on that a couple of weeks ago as well, just really looking at what our committees do and if we need to redefine purpose, charges, et cetera. Also look at our next steps in strategic planning and just really look at where we are as a district, where we want to go, what the board's goals are, what the timeframe is, where we want to be in five years, how are we going to get there, and how are we going to start? So those are the things that we'd like to touch on as at the retreat. Other than that, PNC's next meeting is the first Monday of May. I'm not sure of a date on that.
May 7.
Thank you.
Ginny for Gilman Education?
C and E, we have a meeting next Monday, the 9th, at 7:00 at the S A U.
Jen, were you at the, has there been a budget committee meeting since the last one?
There, there has. The budget committee meeting was Tuesday, March 21st. It was an election of a new chair and a new vice chair. Phil Kendall is the new chair. It was a lot of details.
Vice chair?
Peter Georgantis in abstentia. From what I heard, though, he knew it was coming.
He did. So there was just talk of nailing down details going forward. I sent emails out actually that night from the meeting. The budget committee would like to receive A and F reports, if at all possible.
We've addressed that.
Okay. There was a concern and conversation around the school budget delivery to the budget committee. They feel it comes very late in the year. Three-quarters of the conversation of the budget committee as they're working on the budget prep is related to the town, and then the school's budget comes in and they feel that it's very late. And the warrants, they felt, were extremely late this year.
It is about, I, we can't produce a budget any faster than what we do.
I'm just relating.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I, it would be extremely difficult for us to get a budget any faster than we get.
Can you refresh our memories? When does, when does the budget process start? I remember it starts August.
I mean, we start in August. And then we get the budget to you typically at the beginning of October. And then you have Octo, you basically have, you look at it, you, two presentations, and then you have a couple of nights. And then we get it to them. It's been the first meeting in November.
It was supposed to be November 5th. This year was November 19th by agreement.
Yeah. I mean, it's compressed already.
Because I think there are times where we need more than two months to talk about it.
And it's my, Dan, it's my recommendation that at least the town process was not done at the time that the school budget was delivered to the budget committee?
No, we did finish. We were, for the 19th piece.
For the 19th piece.
Yeah, once the 19th happened, the next meeting was the school.
Okay. So in terms of the, this year, the budgets committee's ability to digest it consistent with what they were doing, although they certainly could have looked at it between the 5th and the 19th, it was there and in front of them to begin their next session.
Right. I believe what the thought process would have been is the two weeks between the 5th and the first time is, you can call it pre-reads, something you can take a peek at, something you can work at. I think the biggest thing that I heard from Jen was the warrant articles. The warrant articles from both the school and the town, I don't think were presented until almost the night before the public hearing. And nobody's, and that gave very little for the budget committee members to actually ponder on before making a decision whether they were going to go ahead and recommend or not recommend. And if we can do that a little earlier, that would probably be appreciated by that body.
I think most of the time, I mean, it was late because it was the building committee. We just didn't have numbers until, I think, that week before, which was the holdup, was those costs.
But from the, from the standpoint of knowing that they were in the pipeline, that was something that got communicated pretty early.
Knowing something was in the pipeline. Yeah.
The reporting to the budget committee is also going to be falling more on the school board rep, whereas in years past, we've had budget committee reps coming to A and F and to the school board meetings. And I'm not sure that that's a process that they're looking to continue. I think more they're going to be relying on the school board rep to present at the meeting versus having the budget committee rep who sat through the school board meeting to report.
How do you feel about that?
We'll find out under agenda item.
What was the reason behind that, Jen? It seems like they would get a lot more information had they come to the meeting and heard it themselves instead of third person along.
Well, it's not really third person along if it's from the school board rep being delivered.
It's, when we sit and talk about things, a lot of information comes up. I would think it would be more beneficial to them to hear that whole discussion instead of the report out afterwards. I'm just wondering what, what their thought process is.
Well, somebody reports to the budget committee, whether it's their own committee man. Well, somebody reports to the budget committee, whether it's their own committee member or a school, the nominated member of the budget committee from the school board. So, I have a feeling, if I am recalling things properly, that really the thought process behind it was that there are several meetings that, you know, they have to find coverage for, it's an extra meeting for them unless, unless I'm misremembering, but I'm pretty sure it was the thought process behind it. We're here and we're going there anyway. The next meeting is April 17th at 7:00 at the town hall.
What day of the week is that? I've already got a pull-up. That's the 3rd Tuesday?
It is the 3rd Tuesday.
God help me. God help me. Thank you.
Was that it?
Jumped the mine.
Yes, please.
Just a reminder, we have an SAU board meeting on Thursday here at the high school at 7:00. If last minute you aren't making it, let me know, because sometimes we have a problem with quorum, and so I wanted to just make sure we have a quorum. I have heard from some of you. Let's see. Update, I just want to update the board on building aid because we obviously have building projects, and I put in my superintendent's notes, but I'm not sure if it was really, I think I put at the end, did you understand that? Because, so there's actually two bills right now, one bill in the House, one bill in the Senate. The bills are very similar with the exception that the House bill has a $50 million budget item attached to it. The Senate bill has no money attached to it, so the Senate could appropriate $40,000, $10,000, $150,000, whatever their whim is on that bill. Basically, what's going to happen is we, from my understanding, is you will not know if you have building aid until after your project is approved and the DOE looks at it. So, what they're doing is, so, the House bill's at, say, $50 million. The first obligation would be to pay off the debt that they already have for building aid. Right now, it's $46 million, so there would be $4 million available to give out for building aid in that scenario. What they would then do is the Department of Ed would take all the approved projects, prioritize them based on need of the district, based on safety concerns, different criteria that they will need to establish, and whoever's at the top of the list, if the project gets passed, they would get that $4 million. It comes, it's, one of the other changes is that right now, building aid is paid out over, like, the 20-year bond, whatever your payment is. The proposal is to pay half upfront and half at the end of the bond, so that it would be a, an upfront payment, so you wouldn't have to actually bond as much as their notion. But we really won't know if we have building aid until after the project is over, after the project's approved, because that's when we'll submit all the forms, is my understanding. So, I just want to update you on that. It's a huge change from where we are now. We are one of the few states in the country who have, like, kind of obligated building aid, that people have almost gotten used to the fact that we should be getting it. Most states, it's budgeted for a certain amount and it's based on need. It will also, you won't be able to use building aid for SAU or administrative areas, and it will be basically a basic framework of a school. So, they'll establish, here's the criteria, because, you know, they don't want to pay for exorbitant schools in towns that don't need that. So, it will be interesting how it all comes down, I don't know, I mean, that's, it passed through the House and it passed through the Senate, so now they'll swap sides to see where it comes out. I don't know if they'll get together and create a bill, but that's where building aid falls, right at, right at this point in time.
Stacy, can I just clarify that we won't know until it's approved? It's approved by the voters, it's gone to ballot, is that the proof we're talking about?
That's my understanding, is how it will work. But until the DOE actually writes the regulations that will go with the law, we won't really know, but that's my understanding, is that they'll then take all the approved projects and determine who's going to get the aid.
Makes it hard to plan.
It does, it makes it very hard to plan.
Just out of curiosity, the price tag won't change because of it, it's just what you need to fund.
Right, right. The price tag isn't going to change, it's a matter of, in the past, we've been, we've gotten 40% in building aid. We will likely get nothing in building aid. And if we got anything, we won't know what we're getting, from my understanding of how it's written, again, could change with any bill that changes, as, you know, it can change in the Senate or the House, either way. We could get something or we could get nothing.
So, the side of the balance sheet that it affects are the revenue side?
Correct.
Okay.
So, just an update on that. I emailed all board members, actually, in all three districts, on the Advancing Student Learning Handbook, the link to that, take a look at that, I'll be asking you to approve that at your next meeting. So, if you have questions, certainly let me know what those questions are, so I can get you an answer. This is just, it's a revision, the only thing, we didn't really drastically change it, what we really did was update it and reformat it. We took, you know, we had a huge committee who met, and one of their concerns was just the format, it was, it was not easy to read, and we, so we edited it, we took some things out, we made it a more fluid document, and so it should be easier to read, but in general, the plan has stayed generally the same in expectation, so take a look at that. The high school art department has, is having their scholarship art awards, kind of little thing tomorrow at 2:00 in the art lobby, if anybody's interested in going, nice opportunity to see what our students do, so I will pass that around, so you can take a look at that. AYP, annual yearly progress, is, will be public tomorrow. I think you saw my superintendent's note, 76% of schools in the state will be in need of improvement after tomorrow, so that's a huge number. The commissioner did share with us that they are looking to apply for a waiver. They're not due till September, but they are going to look to apply for a waiver. But that looks like, we're not really sure at this point, but that will be out tomorrow. Moody's Math Challenge, we got an update today, we did not make it to round three, but talk about being under, you know, 100 schools out of 900 to get chosen, that we did so well to move to level two, that was wonderful. So, I think they only picked nine school districts to go to level three, so it was a great honor for our kids to have even gotten that far in that challenge. I'm working with the SAU administration, and I spoke with Jim today about looking at some kind of a study committee for Mountain View as, to try to address people's concerns, to do some kind of study of Mountain View. I don't, I haven't formulated that yet, so I will, you will likely hear more about that at your next meeting. For permission to go forward, it'll be a much more inclusive plan. I've kind of mapped it out, but we want to brainstorm it out a tad bit, and so we'll be looking to do something to try to address concerns, see what the as-is really is. And just a last update on pink slime, just so that people know. So, we got concurrence from the federal government that they couldn't really identify what boxes we had of hamburgers that had pink slime or what ones didn't, so proactively, we, we didn't have many, I think we had about 20 cases throughout the district of hamburger from them, and so we actually donated, we called the federal government and said, what do we do with it? Like, if we choose, I decided we would be proactive, and even though we've been eating it for 12 years, to alleviate anybody's concern, we decided to get rid of it. They recommended we call community pantries, and we did that, and they were more than happy to take it. So, we actually, Megan, our food service director, spread the word around to other communities to say, hey, if you're interested, your community, you know, pantries, food pantries will take it. And so, we actually started a little trend and made lots of donations to them throughout the state because of that, so that was nice, but I want to confirm we are no longer selling meat that potentially has pink slime in it.
Is that only going to your mother-in-law's house, or is it a bag of stuff you don't want?
Oh, I also want to, other Mountain View news, my late release this afternoon, we, we do every year, we do the New England Math League, and we received, hold on, grade, let's see, we placed in all, let's see.
Placed in all.
In all, grade six, we placed second in our region, which includes Carroll, Cheshire, Coos, Coas, Grafton, Hillsboro, Merrimack, and Sullivan Counties, we placed second with a team score of 107. Maxwell, La Junes placed third in the region. For grade seven, we placed second in the region with Jacob, Britton, Doucette placing fourth individually, and our eighth grade ranked fourth in the region. So, we did really, really well overall in math, so that was nice to see.
We've been doing Math League for a long time.
Yep.
We've placed a couple of times, so we've never placed this many, all three grades, that well. We're doing really well.
So, yeah, so, and that's all I have.
As an aside, the manifest, as it came forward, is sufficient for my request. It has everything I want on it.
Okay.
All the detail is there that I'm looking for, which is every payment, that's in the manifest, so we don't need anything additional.
Terrific.
Job description.
Oh, yes, job descriptions.
So, at the last meeting, we gave you job descriptions for kitchen and administration, and we're looking for your approval of those.
I actually had a few questions. Shocker.
Just coming to the next meeting. Somehow I thought I'd read it for the next meeting.
Jen, did you jot your questions down?
Did I try my question?
No, did you jot them down? So, you'll still have a great, can, could I ask, I started reading, I have not read all of these, I really would like to. If you'll indulge me making the request, if anybody wants to join me, if we can put this off until the next time?
I'll second that.
And if you have questions, like Jen, if you want to email me those, then I can make sure I have answers.
Well, it's your...
If you'll indulge, we're ungrateful.
I don't know how easy or hard they are to answer.
Thanks.
Appraisal, so, break and address, but basically, we went back out, a couple meetings ago, we talked about, we got one request, one response to the appraisal. We went back out, Ray, I think, emailed or sent out the actual appraisal to, like, 17 different places. We got zero responses. So, we only have, we continue to just have this one appraisal, which Ray reached out to Dave, and they're more than happy to continue with that cost, so I think it's Ray's recommendation that we go forward with it, because we have to move on it, and we're just, nobody else is interested in doing it.
What's MTGS?
Meetings.
Meetings. Oh, that's the cost of the meetings to go over the appraisal?
Correct.
Do we do it? Okay, thank you.
So, nothing bad.
Is there anything in the contract where we would have to pay more than this if, for some reason, we don't get everything done in the meetings we're estimating?
We don't have a contract written up yet in this, and we would put a contract together clearly identifying what he's proposing. He is, he's looking for $130 per hour for anything in the way of meetings or presentations to the town, what have you. So, he's anticipating two hours as being the max that he would require based on the way we've scoped the work right now, that's the $260.
And could I just have my memory refreshed as to the purpose behind the...
It is, it is, the, under the area agreement.
Area agreement.
Either of the sending districts has the authority to make a request, we have to comply with that request, and this will comply. The reason was because we used a different methodology, and we're going to go back and have a look at it and see if there is any difference in terms of the values.
Okay.
This wasn't budgeted for, but we have someplace we can put it?
Yeah.
Yes, we do, yeah. And a portion of the cost will be passed on through tuition payments.
I'm not looking at the camera with my smile. We're not bearing everything, we're bearing our portion of the area agreement of it.
Correct, yes.
75%.
Can I segue just to, on the same thing? Is our portion going down and the other two towns going up over the last six years?
My recollection is, is that the deviations have been relatively small. I, I think we may actually have...
1/2% downward.
Yeah, I think we went down a little bit.
Thank you. Do you need anything from us to...
Yeah, we'd like a motion just approving that, we work with Russo and Associates in, for a cost of success of $460.
Can you second it by Hank? Any further questions or discussion?
Yeah, do, Ray, I mean, David Russo, I mean, have you looked at his, what his qualifications are for performing these?
Yeah, he does have a considerable portfolio of municipal work inside the state of New Hampshire.
Yeah, I don't want to do, somebody who's not familiar with it, create this. Appraisal that could effectively not be correct and affect what we can collect on tuition.
Current, current, is, what's, the statute requires certain qualifications for appraising.
Certified appraiser, he's...
Yeah, but I was happy to hear that he has a lot of municipal in his background.
And that's why we're guessing a lot of people didn't respond, not a lot of people have that experience to be able to do that.
Probably more domestic and commercial type.
I don't want someone coming in here, do, that does home appraisals, coming in appraising a school.
It depends.
That number could be anywhere, you know?
So, help me with the process, this is the, the primary step to say, go forward, get a contract, contract comes back here?
No, we'll sign the contract.
Once there's a motion, because that, the motion includes the dollar amount that's being requested for the contract.
Yep.
The district may then enter into the contract with the imprimatur of the board, and eventually we'll see the outcome of the process.
So, right now, we're saying 64-60 with a caveat, if the hours for meetings is greater than two, it would be billed at $130 per hour?
I don't know that there was any caveat, but...
Well, that's what I understood.
That's what he said the billing rate would be, and the proposal is based upon their, his time, he believing the amount of time required is to conduct such meetings would be two hours.
So, if he came to the board and had, and the board had far more questions, then the board would be making that decision to keep him here longer than the two hours, and he would obviously be billed that cost.
But that would be part, that's part of the vote, is where I was coming from.
Yes. Any other questions? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
Sue.
Yep.
Is that yes from Sue, or yes, okay. Thank you.
We actually have learned what that means, although it took a little while because of that very question.
Committee assignments.
Committee assignments. I can either read through these, or I can send them to you.
Or both.
Or both, okay.
Because you, at the end, you, the board needs to adopt them, that's the recommendation, so, would you like me to read them? Would that help?
Sure.
We crossed, we moved. Admin and Finance, Hank Boyle as Chair, Dan, Jen, and Ginny on that committee, with Keith and Suzanne as the alternates. C and E, Ginny as Chair, Jen, Keith, and Philip, with Dan and Suzanne as alternates.
Which one was that?
C and E, Curriculum and Education. The facilities, you already, is Diane, Keith, Suzanne, with Philip as the alternate. HR, Lori as the Chair, Jen, Hank, Suzanne on the committee with Ginny as an alternate. PNC, Diana's Chair, Jen and Keith on the committee with Philip as an alternate. Area...
I'm not expecting to hear my name anymore.
Will we do sign the budget?
Uh, no.
Oh, all right.
Area, Suzanne, Dan, and Philip. And I'm assuming that would be area clarification, which would likely be one or two meetings, we didn't really discuss that. Budget committee is Diane with Keith, with Keith and Philip as alternates. CIP is Suzanne. GEA negotiations, Philip, Jen, and Keith. GESS negotiations, Keith, Suzanne, and Dan, with Diane as an alternate. Those are the major ones.
Jen, can I clarify, did the budget committee change their meeting dates from Wednesdays to Tuesdays? They did.
Is...
I believe so, yeah.
Was it, yeah, because I noticed that it wasn't Wednesday.
They went to the 3rd Tuesday for... No, they went to the third Tuesday for May.
No, just, in May?
They decided on third Tuesdays of the month.
Are we in April? No, April 17th, sorry. It's still at the beginning of April.
I just caught that April, that 17th was a Tuesday.
You can't make that date.
I can't, I'm sorry. It's my son's first ever strings concert, and it's just not negotiable.
I just need to put it into my plan.
Keith is Alt. 1, and Philip's Alt. 2.
I thought it was an Alt. 1.
I started off with a Bang, huh?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I just have to make sure I put in my GEA, so we don't forget. And Tuesdays is much better for me.
At the same time, yeah, at the same time, it's right on, so.
So we need to adopt?
So, yes, unless anybody has any complaints. You can adopt those recommendations.
I'll take, I'll take any complaints if I quit.
You're going to send those out, right, tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah, we retype that.
If I, if I quit on anything?
You really want me on five committees?
You're the Alt., right?
A and L.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
A and L, CNE.
HR.
HR and PNC. With the GE.
Do you want to swap? Ginny for Jen? And then you're Alt.? They're on the same night.
Um, GEA, we're doing myself, you and Dan, right?
No.
GESS. GESS, yes.
You're on the GESS one, or you're on the GEA?
Oh, yeah, no, you're not.
We swapped them.
So how about we revisit that next day, next meeting?
Are there any meetings between now and then?
You could swap these two.
Lori.
And make Jen the alternate.
Yeah, HR and CNE.
HR, it'd make you a member of HR versus an alternate, it's the same night as CNE.
HR and CNE.
Do you mind being an alternate, see if you're on...
If their meeting's on at five?
About 5:30, 6 o'clock.
Stay on CNE, and then we'll make you an alternate on HR.
My preference would be HR, I've been on HR.
And they were creating a synergy.
HR's going to be meeting now at 5:30.
Right.
I can make a 5:30 meeting. So, does she need...
Is that a same-night kind of thing?
It's the same, they're on the same night.
Should we take a recess, instead of trying to do this on the fly?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Got a motion?
I need a motion for that. Not according to the way we read things.
Do you want to go through the rest of the agenda?
Yeah, let's just keep working on the agenda.
Yeah.
And we will revisit that.
Thank you, you mentioned that.
No, that's, you're being rewarded, what are you talking about? That's your reward, it's an honor!
Okay.
All right, that's because you wouldn't take Budget Committee again for a year, that's why you got that, okay?
Yeah, we just want to keep your nights filled.
Policy BCA.
Okay, so, Policy BCA, so I'm going to pass this around, this is your annual ethics policy. Student, rep, and school teacher reps also signed this, so here is the poll, the regulations. Here's what you're agreeing to. So take a look at it, and then sign the first page. It's basically saying that you will be an upstanding board member to the board, but there's a bunch of things on here you should read, if you haven't read it lately.
Question. There wasn't a legal reference on this particular policy, that there are on the other ones. It's really BCA-R that has all the ethics policy statement. Read through them, don't have a problem with them, but I'm looking for the legal reference that has me sign a document other than taking the constitutional oath of office. Is there...
If there would be no legal reference, it means there's not, it's not a required policy. It is likely a policy the board created at some point in history, well before my time.
Okay.
Yeah, that you've been doing.
Twenty-five years, from my understanding.
If there's no legal reference, it means there's no legal requirement that you have to have that policy.
Proposed 11-199 is the last, the date that's on this.
Yeah.
Which would be thirteen years, unless the date prior to that has been dropped.
No, it probably was 1999.
That was revised, it was adopted again in '05. Am I right?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah, so...
Proposed 11-199, adopted 12-199, re-adopted in '05. You don't have any opposition to being ethical and signing the commitment to being ethical?
I might, because I'm looking for the legal reference. As I said, and on the record, I have no problem with any of this. But where I'm coming from is, in Part II of the Constitution, I raised my hand, and I already said all of this. And there's a stipulation in the RSA that says, there's nothing else that can be commanded of an elected official other than making that statement. That's my objection to the procedure. That's all.
I would say, pest around, and if you don't want to sign it, don't sign it.
If it's a policy of ours.
That's why I was asking, if there's something that, that would require me to do that, because I don't mind...
Yeah, it's, I don't think it's, it's not a statement, it's a, it's a board policy, it is not clear. We'll read, review, and sign a copy of the statement. So if you'd like to take it to HR, and have HR look at it and change it, that's fine. But as it is, it stands, and the requirement is the board's requirement, not the state's requirement. The state's requirement has to do with your oath of office. This is distinguishable from that.
I think Dan was referring to in the state statute that you cannot mandate any further requirements. Which may be true, actually, I haven't looked at it in a long time.
So that's, that's where I would like to...
I mean, again, if it's something we want to take a look at, and compare the statute to the policy, to determine whether or not there's any overlap, that's fine. In the meantime, ultimately...
Is that HR, that's Lori, right?
Your choice.
And she's typing.
I'm waiting.
Bartlett-Tour Project? So, we met, Ray and I actually met this week with Carl Quirum from DPW about the Bartlett...
I'm going to put a letter in, a Bartlett?
So if you remember, when we talked about doing the Bartlett Project, the, one of the concerns that we needed to address or, or consider was that they're going to be tearing up Mass Road and repaving it. If a year from now the project gets passed, we are going to, and we have to, because part of the project is to realign the front driveway, is that if we tear up Mass Road, which we will, because we also need to connect to sewer, and move the driveway, which means the curbing is moving, we are responsible for repaving Mass Road, because DPW will only repave every five years. So it adds a huge cost to our...
Wait a second.
No, it's just a minute, they won't, they won't say Mass Road. If it's within a five-year period of time, we're responsible for paving the entire road, versus just patching. If they have just repaved it. So, on the positive side, we, so we met with Carl, who actually thinks they could do the work as they're doing the project. Um, the question we had was on the sewer line. Um, we had several plans that went forward. Um, we're actually meeting with both CMK and Harvey Construction on Friday. Um, we're going to look at the plans, Carl's coming in with Megan, to look at where the sewer line went. If it's the sewer line connection in the front, that's down twenty feet, it may cost a little bit more for them to do it. He's looking, he needs direction to see if that is, if it's the front one that goes across, absolutely, they can do it. He's estimating if it's the front one to go across, it should be under $10,000 for them to repave the front driveway, put new curbing in, because they're going to be putting the curbing in anyway, it just means they're moving just the space where the opening is, and to extend the sewer pipe. So on Friday, we'll have a better estimate. The downside is, they, we just got notice, and they informed us they are doing in front of Bartlett on April Vacation Week. So we're on a time crunch. So, um, I guess what I'm asking the board is, is the authority to work with DPW, and for you to authorize us, say, up to, to spend up to $20,000 to make this happen while they're doing the construction. We would certainly bring that back to you, or I would send you an email on Friday after we met, to let you know exactly what the cost is going to be. Um, but you don't have another board meeting in time. You have another board meeting for April Vacation, but not in enough time for them to plan to do this, as well as the project they're doing for April Vacation Week.
I'll make a motion to extend the authority to you, or your designee, to make that decision and report back to the board what it was.
I'll second it, because it sounds like we're going to, this will be a much smaller cost than if we have to pave the road.
It'll actually be much cheaper than us even having the construction company do it, because they're doing the work already. So like, the sidewalk is already going to, they're already buying the sidewalk, so it's just a matter of moving the opening for us. So it will be significantly cheaper than us tearing the sidewalk out.
So they're going to put a new bus?
They'll be able to pave for the new bus route as well.
During the week of April Vacation?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a motion.
Have they promised that it would be done during April Vacation?
Yes, and they actually sent out a letter.
Ongoing discussion.
That's their, their plan. Their plan specifically was to do it April Vacation while we were not in school.
What's the realignment of openings?
So the, the driveway is going to extend down, so if you look at, if you're facing the school, it's like a little loop, it's just going to extend down to the end of the building and create, so we'll actually be able to have parking.
So the bus would be a little longer.
No, the buses actually go down the back. The buses actually go down the back to Higgin Street. But the, it will allow more cars to be able to, one is, when this whole project is done, they'll be actually parking in the front for visitors, which we don't have right now. But it'll also allow five or six cars to line up there to let kids off, versus, right now, they, we can, about two get in there, so we back up onto Mass Road, so it will alleviate some of the backup on Mass Road by extending.
How does that affect the sewer line? That's where I'm...
Because the sewer line needs to be, well, the sewer line needs to be extended when we do the addition. We need to hook up to a different section of the sewer pipe, for the addition.
Because it wouldn't go into the same pipe, so we need to put like an interceptor pipe and cap it off someplace?
Correct. Onto our property, because right now it's on Mass Road.
Right.
If we can extend it now, again, it saves us from digging up.
While they have the street dug up.
Absolutely. That's the plan.
And they estimated the cost would be around ten?
Yes. Ten, if it's the pipe that goes vertical across the property, it may be a little bit more if it's the one that's twenty feet down. They have to look.
They don't know which one?
We had, we had several plans, and CMK needs, we're meeting with them on Friday to go over which was the final plan, because, um, planning had some comments on it, and I just can't, we couldn't remember. There was, Carl looked at several drawings and had different plans, and we just want to make sure we're addressing the right plan, so.
This wasn't budgeted. Where do we plan on finding the money for this one?
In the budget. We have money, yeah.
Other unexpendited appropriations?
Correct. Like, we still have money for, that retire, from the retirement money that we didn't, like, we didn't hire two teachers with that retirement money, because we didn't know that we weren't going to have that money until this year. So, so there is some money. And this was something that, this was something that actually came up months ago, when we brought the, the project to planning, that Carl brought up the notion that it was going to cost us more, because if they were repaving, it just, it's coming faster. We thought it was going to be over the summer time, it's just happening faster than we anticipated, because of their timeline.
Will the end result be, get a little parking area in the front, and the extended U and the sewer available if and when an extension might occur?
Correct.
Okay, we'll also have the...
That's basically the two outcomes, is to realign the front.
Yeah.
To align the new curbing, and to extend the sewer pipe onto our property.
But you mentioned something about parking in the front, is that going to be part of this too?
No, it could be, but, I mean, it's, it's...
No, no, for this particular project, no, just realignment of the driveway.
I mean, it's going to be just the driveway, at some point, we could put parking spaces there, but...
This is just to realign the driveway and the sewer?
Correct, they're not going to do any lining for it.
How about our sign, we don't have to move our sign, do we?
I don't believe so.
Okay. It's pretty close to the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I figured it was pretty close.
So that I won't forget to take a vote. Any other questions, Jenny?
No, I'm sorry.
All in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? Abstentions? Suzanne, are you unanimous?
In favor.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is, I'm just bringing this to the board's attention.
I'm glad you did, because I had it.
It's, so the property just behind Bartlett on Higgin Street is for sale.
Which one?
The one that sits, so if you're, if you're at Bartlett looking towards Higgin Street, it's the one on the right-hand side, that I believe was up for sale many, many years ago.
Last one on the street.
Yeah.
But is there not, is there not a gully between our property and that property, a water drainage gully?
I'll be honest with you, I haven't looked that extensively, I just...
I think it's that one, I think. I'm not sure.
I thought I was wondering. What's the asking price on it?
The asking price is $189.9.
Yeah.
How much research have we put into its viability as an extension of our property?
None, zero. I mean, I haven't done anything. I'm just bringing it to the board.
We can get rid of it through the library!
It is, I, I, I think for the board, you have to recognize, it is a piece of property that's located next to the school, in a landlocked location, that we're looking to put an expansion on. It could be a potential playground area, I mean, there's, you know, it would obviously, I don't know what the building is.
Maybe you've seen the picture refresh, which property it is.
If it is flat, it is about half the size of the current property lot. When this came up, I took, I took a peek at it. Right now, um, what do we have for acreage?
It's a pretty decent, it's...
It's about half the acreage of the Bartlett property.
Is it really?
Yeah. And what would happen is, Higgin Street wouldn't have to be as long, because that property...
Could shorten it up.
It could be shortened up a little bit, so that would ease something over. My question would be, if this board would like to pursue something like that, unfortunately, a couple of weeks ago, we approved a two-year extension to a program for the alternate ed.
Yep.
My question would be the viability of having alt-ed in the house that's there while there's no construction or expansion going on for Bartlett.
I, I believe we'd, I believe to buy, for us to buy, and I, I just researched it briefly, I think to buy property, it has to be on a warrant article.
It does.
So it would be at least another year out before we were able to do that. I mean, I, I would be interested in perhaps walking through it, because I don't, I just don't know what the layout inside, whether it would be suitable for a program or not, but that would absolutely be option.
At that point, we've saved $50,000 right off the top for a two-year.
Yep.
Which is twenty-five, well, a little less than, a little more than twenty-five percent of the purchase price.
How are we going to get this on a warrant article? It would sell within the next eleven months, probably.
I do think we're wise to try to explore.
We'd have to do a special election.
Options, I think we're very wise to try to explore options.
It's .57 acres.
I just think it's an opportunity for us to, I mean, you hate to, it's, it's a piece of property on a land, in a building lot that's really landlocked.
Somebody needs from us to...
I just want to refresh my memory of what property it is.
I mean, I, I certainly, if, if, if the board approves us, you know, Ray and I can certainly call the Realtor, go over, at least look at the property, ask them if they're willing to negotiate with the school board, with the understanding that it would have to be on a warrant article, and just, we can feel them out to see where they're at.
But a special warrant, a special election for this warrant article, would be, run us, what, $10,000 to do?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if they would approve it. I don't know that this is an emergency.
Well, it would be, in the fact that we can claim that we, this is our only access to being able to buy this property now, we can't wait a year.
Yeah, I know last time we consulted the attorney about that, they said they didn't think that buying property would be considered an emergency.
So, so what other options are there? I mean, I, I know that we donated a million dollars to the town this year. Suppose they could buy it and keep it for us? Is the town, is that even something that's possible?
It'd still have to go on a warrant.
Would it still have to?
Still hasn't, they can't just buy real estate. I am thinking of, of the potential, and that's, yeah, what, what is our lock-in on the contract we approved two weeks ago with the Alt.?
We can get out of it.
Yeah, I, we have a great relationship with them, I'm sure if we had this opportunity, I would, I'm not, don't, don't not do this because of that, because I, that would be workable.
If it was possible to work something out, and go further, and see whether the owners would be willing to accept some kind of rental agreement, for us to rent it out for a year or two, to feel out, to see whether we could put it on the warrant, and if we could buy it, and then they wouldn't have to worry about the rental, and it would give them some income, we would use it. we would use it. You see where I'm going? No matter what, even if it didn't work out for us, and they had to put it back on the market, they would still have rented it for.
Why don't, why don't?
And this all goes, if it makes sense for all of it, and not.
Why don't you guys have Ray and I, maybe we can go over and look at the property and talk to them and feel them out for what they're willing or not willing. I mean, if they've already had 10 offers, then certainly they're not gonna wait a year, but if they've had nothing.
What's the address?
And it's 10 Higgin Street.
Stacy, if it's a house, it's probably not going to have the same size rooms as.
Right, and that's why we were going to look at it.
Yeah, the beds are 12 by 12, 16 by 16, and 11 by 14.
Right, so we'd have to look at it to see if it was functional for what it.
I don't know if it's functional.
I don't know, like, for the alt ed, I don't know if the electric, I mean, I don't know how hard it is to get stronger electric and 210. Is that easy?
Yeah.
It's assessed for $168.
Yeah, that's, the assessment is attached to the back of it. Yeah. So if, if the board's okay, we'll just go take a look at it, and then we can get back to you, if not next meeting, the meeting after that, and let you know what our conversation was, and kinda, I just don't want it to go beyond, like, I, I don't, it's in, it is an opportunity for us, I think, to think about.
Yeah, no, I think we're wise to pursue opportunity.
Google Earth? You wanna Google Earth?
No, I'm on vision appraisal.
Okay. To either. I can't tell if it's a gully or not, from looking.
I thought there was a drainage ditch back to take a Mass Road.
Right where the, as you go down the car, to go down in there?
I'm gonna pass out the first of your nomination list, and then I'll have teachers. So to start with, we have three confirmed retirements, so these are just notified. Nancy Benison.
Kathy St. Jean's retiring, huh?
Janine LaRoche and Kathy St. Jean will definitely be retiring.
That's a lot of experience.
So those we're just notifying you of. So some of them, you may have seen ads in the paper, cause we were anticipating them. We have several non-renewals. Many of them were just one-year positions, either leaves of absences, things like that. So, non-renewals are Christina Buckley is in a one-year position, Diane Cludier is in a one-year position, Brigitte Como is a one-year position, Mark Gagne, if you remember, is a reduction in force. He was actually ripped last year, but we were able to, somebody else was on a leave of absence, so we shuffled. Laura Loizel is a non-renewal, Georgia Paris is a non-renewal, Jacqueline Pichette is a one-year position, Shirley Quigley is a non-renewal, and Shelley Rhines is a one-year position. So I'd be looking for a motion to accept those as non-renewals.
I need a motion.
You wanna wait for the motion before we ask questions?
That's generally what our practice is. Motion, second, discussion.
I don't have a motion.
I'll second.
Keith and Jenny seconds. Questions, to the, to the extent that we can answer them?
Those four marked here that say one-year position, they were hired with the knowledge it was a one-year position, I'm presuming.
Yep, their contracts actually say.
And with Mark, because of what your explanation, reduction in force, there are three others here. How long have they been in, as teachers, the positions?
Laura and Shirley are one-year. Georgia is multiple years. I couldn't tell you how many.
And Laura and Shirley are one-year, Georgia, when you say multiple, is that less than three or less than five?
No, probably 10, 15 years.
And maybe the next question belongs in non-public?
I think what you're gonna ask, yes.
So.
We can table it.
We can table it. That's fine.
Okay, motion to tables, so I can ask some questions?
Second?
Maybe we could actually do, cause I'm gonna have one on, further down, that I'd like to ask in non-public as well, so.
All in favor of tabling the motion that's on the table? Opposed? Abstentions? Were you unanimous in the motion to table it?
Teacher resignations, we have two, Mike French and Roger Ward.
And I'd like to wait till after non-public to.
Did they say why? Are we able to ask that question?
I don't, I think you better ask that in non-public.
Yep.
Teacher nominations. Here is the list.
Can you wait soon?
No, I'm fine.
I'm not going to read these all individually, but these are your nominations for the 2012, 2013 teacher nominations.
Would it be easier to do all of these after non-public, just in case there's any other, you know, questions that might come up?
Administrator nominations, I'll bring forward. We can talk about salary in non-public. And then co-curricular. We have several, the four bottom ones are all volunteers, so they're just volunteer physicians. And Tiffany McCarthy would be a new Mountain View softball coach, who's the only actual paid contact.
So that's a paid position?
Correct. The rest are all volunteers.
Stipend.
The teacher nominations, because we don't have a current contract, that's all the teachers in the district?
Correct, and it's all, everybody's at the same step in salary as they were this year.
On the co-curricular nominations, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve those.
The second, Jenny? Any questions?
The date, the date's 12/13.
Are these for?
No, these are probably for now. These are for now.
These are for now.
Yeah, the process is in terms of.
They're all spring sports.
I was just concerned about the date.
Oh.
Yes.
And all of these people have had a background check?
Is that correct?
Yep.
It is correct, because it's for the spring term.
Uh, okay. Does the spring go beyond the June 30th date, this 2011?
No, no, spring ends typically beginning of June, unless we make it into playoffs.
So it's the current budget?
Yes.
And, and the compensation associated with the MBMS softball position is something that is part of.
The contract.
Or was part of a collective bargaining agreement?
Yep.
Yep, okay. And it'll be until the 30th. Any other questions?
There is a district, who's the district athletic director association?
Steve Allen.
And these have all gone through.
They come from nominations from him.
And they come up through.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion as presented?
Is that the co-curricular?
Co-curricular.
That was right.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Were you unanimous?
May, may abstain?
Are you abstaining? Okay.
Yes.
Suzanne abstains? Any, yeah, everything else. Any other business that may legally come before the meeting?
I just wanted to bring up one thing that came to my attention today. Mountain View's, baseball has a home game next Tuesday, and again, nothing's been done to the field to prepare it for games. And I guess it has a fair amount of work that needs to be done. I'm gonna pass that on to Steve.
I think you're counting the parks and recs up and down.
Yeah, parks and recs.
Let's fill that Mountain View zone?
Baseball, yes.
I would entertain a motion to go into non-public?
Before that, I had one thing I'd like to bring up. There's been a lot of communication that I have received on probably a topic that was discussed at the board prior to me becoming a member, and that was the nurse EMT situation. Is that a done deal, or is that something you can catch me up on, or is that something maybe I can get caught up outside of the formal meeting? I, I don't know what the board, the motion to the board was, or where it was going. That's really where I'm asking.
Okay.
About two weeks ago?
Four weeks ago.
Yeah, four weeks ago.
Actually, we would have to go back almost, I think, a year to bring you up to speed completely, because it has been an ongoing dialogue.
Yeah.
I could tell you the entire story as I know it, but there is, there is presently no motion on the floor, and I don't believe any that has been taken. The district has examined the positions, looked at the needs, looked at the Department of Ed standards and the requirements, and the change in position with regard to those standards and requirements, and is moving forward with a model that is different from the existing model, which will fill those positions on an FTE basis with RNs.
Because I don't know the difference between an RN and LN, or all of those other designations. Can you point me someplace where I might be, could you send me something that would point me, so I can take a peek at it and read it, so I can phone up on it?
Yeah, I mean, if you just Google RN, it will tell, it's a registered.
No, it's not the RN, it's the Department of Education changing their model. That's what.
So we're changing the model.
They didn't change, they didn't change the model. They, they didn't even change the requirements. If you were to go and look at the requirements on the Department of Ed's site, there wouldn't, and you looked at the date at the bottom, as you did earlier, on our own policies, it would not indicate that the Department of Ed had changed their policy. It is simply a ratcheting up of, these are the people who we want doing the job. So, we had more latitude and flexibility that we exercised. We don't, we don't, the district.
The administration of the district?
The administration of the district.
Not this board?
That's correct.
Okay.
Ultimately, when we first changed what we were doing, and I was here then, I think Jenny was.
I wasn't.
We tracked it somewhere back in the 1900s.
Well, no, it was, it was, I think it was after, I, I came on the board, I think, in 2000, 2001.
Probably 2001, 2002, somewhere around there.
Yeah, I think that, that I know we were talking about changing what we currently used as a model then, because we had more flexibility. And we started filling some of the, what had been RN positions with EMTs, simply because we had the flexibility to do so. We have shifted back in the other direction.
Okay.
I don't believe that the state requirements have changed.
No.
I, I do believe that the push has been to fill the positions consistent with the state requirements.
Which just require health services. They don't require any.
Which means EMTs are health services. So I'm still trying to find out, cause if the board hasn't made that decision, gone for it, it's been the administration, and their task, I believe in the law, of filling positions, bringing nominations to us, and that kind of thing, that, does that include administrative support staff as well, such as nurses?
Nurses are an administrative support, nurses on a teacher's contract.
So they would be.
They'd be in here.
They would be part of the, you would bring over here to find out?
We, we bought to the board the recommendation to, to eliminate the LNA at Glen Lake, and the two EMTs at the middle school, and convert those to seven RNs.
Yeah.
To the board.
That has happened already?
No.
Oh, it happened.
Well, the recommendation.
The recommendation, we bought to the board.
And we voted.
And the board, you didn't vote. We were just looking consensus, and you'll vote when we bring the person, the nominations forward. So when we bring, we've advertised for those nurses. I mean, if the board would like to make a motion to firm that up, but to me, when we bring the nomination forward of the nurses, that's your confirmation that you're going that direction. I mean, if you wanna have more conversation.
I think that's what I was looking for, when I said the discussion happened, and there was a motion in play. It was that, and that, was that over a year ago?
No. What I, what, let me back up. What I said was the discussion about this has been going on for about a year.
Okay.
Okay. And I also said there wasn't any motion that had been made with regard to the model.
It was just, it makes sense, go forward and see what happens? Okay.
Well.
So it could be up for discussion?
It wasn't, it wasn't quite that willy-nilly, but yeah.
All right.
Yes.
I mean, it was the board's consensus that, yep, this sounds like a.
There was a recommendation, there was a conversation around the reasons for, and the board supported those reasons.
Okay. If I would want to bring that up again, to talk about it, so, I would ask for an agenda item for that to be placed, so that we could do that, or, I'm looking to bone up on the conversation, and I don't think I get everything when I read minutes. So if anybody's gonna volunteer to catch me up, that would be good. Otherwise than that, I'd like to have the open discussion, to find out where we are. But it, it doesn't make sense, because the makeup of this board is eight of you are still here. And why would that change? I don't wanna waste.
I'm confused. I just, I wanna make sure that I follow what you said. There are eight of us still here, so why did what change? I just wanna make sure that I understand. I mean, if, if there are questions, rather than, rather than doing here right now, we can certainly try to get you some information for you to peruse.
What I'm trying to do is understand, from what I'm looking at, the information in my independent study, fiscally, what I'm looking at makes sense where we have the double model of the EMTs and the nurses. And from what I understand, and I don't know if it's correct, it's been a hard time keeping nurses around on a day, so that only EMT is available. And there are certain things EMT can't do according to their rules and regulations, and a nurse can do for some reason. And so if a nurse isn't here, you figure if you had two nurses, instead of a nurse and an EMT, at least one of them would be on board.
If we had nurses absent, we could have coverage internally.
You have a very comprehensive.
Yeah.
Understanding for something that you weren't here for.
And, well, homework. The other thing I'm thinking about is, we went to the EMT nurse for a reason. There are certain things that an EMT has, has been trained to do. How often have those learned training been put into place? Like sports, ports injuries, those kind of things, versus the things that a nurse needs to do? So I'm looking at filling the need.
So let me back up, because our EMTs are not hired to take care of sports or athletics. We have trainers that are out there. Like at the high school, we have a trainer who is managed. So the goal is not.
It's during the day stuff?
Yep, so it, it's hard to say, because could a nurse fill in and call 911 just as much as an EMT? Absolutely.
Eh, it's not, no, that's not what an EMT is trained to do. An EMT is trained to do evaluation.
Right. I'll just, we don't have EMTs at our elementary schools. So, to me, if we were going to have them, our elementary school is where the kids who are playing out on the playground and swinging and falling, that's where, to me, when you talk about emergency management services, where the kids are going to get most hurt, we don't have them. I, I tried to find information on the model when we went to it. My understanding was that we, at one point, had a single nurse in every school, and that the middle school and high school wanted, needed additional services, and that at some point, those were hired, the EMTs were hired. My guess, and there's, we can't.
Probably to save money.
To save money, because they were cheaper than hiring two nurses. We believe, with the, what we have budgeted, we can hire seven nurses for what is budgeted, so it's not costing us any more.
Any more than the budget, or any more than what?
Any more than what is budgeted.
Okay, let's go back to what the cost was, because we're talking cost, not budget. Do we feel that the seven nurses would physically cost more than the current model?
No, we believe we can fill seven nurses with this, with what the budget items are, which are actual costs for those current seven people, we can fill with seven people.
Because of the retirement?
Correct.
But as contract goes and years go out, that might not be the same thing as we go over. And that, that actually isn't my, my main focus. My main focus is, is helping out the children in the school, to find out what it is that they need. And I'm presuming that the nurses also help with the special ed children who need needs as well.
And EMT can't do that.
Right.
And I will tell you that, we, I mean, we have had lots of conversations at the administrative level with the principals. We have, we have, this has been a long-going conversation, all the way back to the hiring of the LNA at Glen Lake, and how that is working out. We've had lots of conversations. We believe that this is the best model in the interest of children. There is no requirement. We are, as far as I can find, the only school district in the state that has EMTs, and there's likely a reason for that. And that is that the model doesn't necessarily work well in a school, because of the limitations of what they can do. We can't take an EMT from one building and put them in another building if the nurse is out, because they can't function in that role, unless they're in the purview of a nurse. So, the ability for us to have seven nurses, to be able to use them flexibly within our schools, if somebody is out, we will have. We've struggled with finding nurse substitutes, and we have advertised everywhere. So we have, you got a letter, we have advertising ed jobs. I mean, that's a regular place we go. We have advertised extensively for school nurses. So, we have done, and we, we think this is the best model for our students.
May I add to that, too, because I think part of maybe what some of you are thinking, too, is that, you know, an EMT goes on ambulance, and they do all kinds of things. But what you don't realize is they have a protocol that a doctor has given them to function. And in, in the school system, they work under the nurse in that same capacity. So, they don't.
No, they don't. They don't work under the nurse. They still work under the doctor, and I think the agreement is with CMC, and the doctor's name is, so they still work under the same protocols, but they don't go on there. So they don't work under the nurse. They just, from what I understand, can't do.
All the things.
All the things that a nurse can do, because of limitations. And I'm wondering if for some reason, the state would alter those limitations, would that satisfy the model, or is it still other things that an RN does that an EMT doesn't do?
Well, I can tell you the state won't alter those. I mean, this is why we're in part of the position we're in, is because things like medication. So, if the nurse is out, the EMT cannot give medication, which means somebody else has to step in and do it. So now we have an EMT sitting there, basically doing kind of nothing.
Who's gonna step in and do it, then?
Well, the principal, secretary.
Now, that, I got to tell you, sounds ridiculous to me. You've got a trained EMT who can't dismiss medication, but the principal can.
Correct.
Yep, is that the Department of Ed, or is that the...
That's EMT, that's whoever oversees EMT laws.
Oh, good lord, all right, that's what the note I wrote down.
And that's, and that's one of the issues, like at Glen Lake with the LNA, was in that role, the principal, so the principal can designate somebody to give medications if they're not there, typically the principal will do it if the nurse isn't there. The LNA, even under her role, cannot prescribe medication, even if we say, you're in a separate role than the LNA, the LNA, because their, their license doesn't allow them to give medication, even if we say you're the designated person, they still can't do it. So we just come across, it's, and it's been a learning process, and some of it has been change, not changes in the regulations, but changes in the implementation, that they're really watching, and following up with these things, and saying, you can't do this, and so that kind of prompted, a year ago, this conversation, and so this was the administrator solution to, to a problem.
So one last question, was there something specific that you had a list of that we need to have done? Like an RN versus LN, well, a dispense medication, that's one, so that's one thing I've heard, is dispense medication, is there something else?
They can't do any assessments.
Assessments?
Right.
Okay.
Like...
Like stomach ache, or headache, or those kind, take the temperature, take, you know...
Mini mental status exam when a kid falls and hits their head.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And to bring up a sore subject, I recently asked in the school that I work in, what they pay their nurse substitutes, and it's $150. They pay...
We're really low on it.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we have no substitutes. And they pay their teachers $75, so they're on the same ballpark with that, but I really think we have a list of that number, because when a nurse comes in, and I don't make lightly of what teachers do in the course of a day, I mean, you know that perfectly well, I, you do important work, and we really need you and stuff, but a nurse comes in and makes a whole different kind of assessments, you know, a kid can fail a math test because maybe the teacher didn't get to that child, and they didn't learn that lesson, but if the nurse has to know the right kind of medication, and give it right, and can't make mistakes, and they have to carry their license, and there's a whole different responsibility of life and death, as opposed to the people that come in that are teacher substitutes, that, you know, follow up some plans, keep the kids in, you know, and do those kinds of things. So the responsibility between the two is huge.
I mean, we can, if the board, I mean, it certainly would help if we could increase that salary.
I mean, we talked about it over and over.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly go back and do some research, I mean, it also has a budget impact to do that, so...
Well, it also has a contractual obligation under the teacher's contract.
No, because substitute pay is not a part of the teacher's contract.
It isn't?
We're just talking substitutes.
Oh, okay, I thought it was.
Yeah, so we can, I mean, we can certainly do some, we can, you know, find out what other districts are paying, and come back with a proposal or a thought, at least, on that, because it would certainly help if we could increase that, it might help us, you know? Because I think, if you're a nurse, you're willing, you're more likely to, still filling out the hospital than you are to come work for a school district for $75, for $65 a day.
Because that's...
Right, so we can certainly investigate it, we'll need to look at how many days in the past we've had nurses out, what the budget could impact, because we have cut that line significantly over the years, so, but we'll, we can come back with a proposal on that to help.
Any other business that might legally come before the board? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go into non-public.
I'll second, if nobody's second, can you read the pursuant, too, so, 293, no?
RSE 91.
Dash A, Roman...
A. Dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.